Six o'clock and I called, uh, this is an actual meeting of the Branch City Council to order these call the roll. You're not calling the roll. Who's calling the roll?
Okay. Chezak.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Stangline.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
Mayor Bedeau.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. This is, uh, one item evening for the budget discussion of the two thousand and twenty-five budget levy presentation. Connie, take it away.
Thank you.
Connie, is this a meeting or a workshop?
It should just be a workshop.
Just a workshop. Got it. Okay.
Is it shorter?
Uh, Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chezak.
A meeting is a workshop is a meeting. It's a special meeting. We can, we can vote in this meeting if we wanted to, as long as we don't deviate from our agenda. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Connie.
All right. So, the city of Brainerd's budget, what do we budget? A city has to adopt a budget for at least the general fund, but it does not have to for every fund, which is a good thing since the city has sixty-two different funds. The city has historically adopted official budget for the following funds: the general fund, special revenue funds, um, for public safety, this is police and fire, parks and recreation, and street and sewer fund. These three special revenues funds, along with the general fund, are often referred to as the working fund and are the funds that we need to levy for, for operations. For reporting purposes, these three special revenue funds are reported under the general fund. The city has historic budget. We estimate all of the non-tax revenues such as fees, fines, local government aid. We estimate all of the expenditures, personnel costs, supplies, services, debt, capital, and how we do that is we use the averages over the last several years and any additional information we may have to estimate both the non-taxable revenues and expenditures. The difference between the two is generally the levy needed. Tonight's discussion again will focus on the working funds, um, debt and capital, equipment and facility fund, the funds that the city needs to levy for operations. The preliminary levy needs to be certified to the county by September thirtieth. The preliminary levy is what's used to send out the tax notices to residents in November, and the final levy needs to be certified to the county by December thirtieth. The final levy can be lower than the certified levy in September, but cannot be higher. So, per the city charter, the city council, PNF chair, and city administrator meet to discuss the two thousand and twenty-five budget. This budget will presented to the council before September first, and the budget that is presented tonight is reflective of that meeting. So, the chart on the following two slides shows the two thousand and twenty-three actual information, the adopted budget for two thousand and twenty-four, the proposed budget as of today for two thousand and twenty-five, the dollar difference between the two budgets, and the percentage difference as well. We start by estimating the operating expenditures broken out by personnel services, supplies, services, and transfers out. The operating expenditures total thirteen million, five hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars, and is a million-dollar increase or eight-point-oh-four percent different from the two thousand and twenty-four budget. Will we discuss each more in detail later? When we look at the levy needs for facility and equipment, it is current, the levy is currently at one million, two hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and is the same as it was for two thousand and twenty-four. We also need to consider that we have enough levy to make the debt service payments. The debt levy is currently at seven hundred and sixty-five thousand and is a decrease of two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars from the two thousand and twenty-four debt levy. We also need to consider the amounts needed for the, for the other levies, those set by charter and for the library, EDA, and airport. The EDA, library, and airport have all requested increases. The current budget has kept the library, EDA, and airport funded at the two thousand and twenty-four amounts. The increases are not reflected in this summary. So, without the requested increase from the library, EDA, airport, the total estimated expenditures are sixteen million, seven hundred ninety thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is an eight hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-six or five-point- three-two percent increase over the two thousand and twenty-four budget. Now, if we look at our non-property tax revenues, for two thousand and twenty-five, the current amount is nine million, twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, which is about eighty-five thousand or point one, or basically one percent more than the two thousand and twenty-four budget. The city also needs to take into consideration any additions or uses of fund balance. Two thousand and twenty-five is not an election year, so therefore the city increases its fund balance and planning for the two thousand and twenty-six election. We're also going to use some of the one-time public safety aid that was received in two thousand and twenty-three. In two thousand and twenty-four, the council direction was to fund the additional one-point-five sworn officers at a hundred percent with the aid, sixty-six percent in two thousand and twenty-five, and thirty-three percent in two thousand and twenty-six. Council direction at the first meeting in August was to use the public safety aid to pay for the increase in the records management software, less the amount reimbursed from Sourcewell. Also, in two thousand and twenty-four, the council set the levy at an eight percent increase over the two thousand and twenty-three levy. This was approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand more than what was needed to balance the budget, and we did this to, one, implement the wage study and to help with the two thousand and twenty-five levy. Since the amount budgeted in two thousand and twenty-four appears to have been enough to implement the wage study, the hundred and thirteen thousand could be used to help balance the two thousand and twenty-five levy. The city's fund balance policy is that we're supposed to be at thirty-five to fifty percent of the current year's expenditures. At December thirty-first, we were at twenty-one percent. Currently, there is nothing in the budget to get the city closer to meeting the policy. Now that we have estimated all the expenditures and the non-property tax revenues, the difference is the amount of the levy needed, which is currently at seven million, five hundred sixty thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars, or an eight-point-six-four percent increase over the two thousand and twenty-four levy. The eight-point-six-four percent is not the recommended levy increase, rather it's what's needed to balance the budget as it currently stands and does not consider the increases to the library, EDA, and airport from the two thousand and twenty-four funded amounts. Now, if we go through each line item, starting with personnel services, personnel services increased by just almost seven hundred thousand dollars. We are budgeting one less full-time equivalent in the working funds. However, we are budgeting a part-time employee. This is due to not filling the assistant planner position. We're budgeting additional two-point-five full-time temporary employees and have increased the wages to a range of eighteen to twenty dollars per hour. This excludes the budget for CSOs and the part-time employee as they are on step one of the grid. Ten percent of the city administrator's salaries being allocated to public utilities department, and the budget currently does not include any employees moving to step seven or eight. Assumes the employee will elect the same health insurance plan that they currently have today. New employees will elect the thirty-two-hundred-dollar family plan option, and we use an eight percent increase in the Sourcewell plans and a five percent in the other plans. The League of Minnesota Cities recommends a budget increase rate of three to five percent for workers' comp rates and a ten percent increase in the experience mod. The current budget includes a five percent increase in the rates and experience mod of one-point-zero-seven, which is an increase from point nine-seven in two thousand and twenty-four. There are no changes to the para rates, long-term disability, or employer-paid health insurance, life insurance premiums. If we look at surprise, uh, supplies, we have an increase of fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. This is just bringing the budget more in line with the averages. For services, we see an increase of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. Professional services and rental expense have increased due to updating the comprehensive plan and the street sweeping screening cost. Say that fast three times. Both of these projects occur every five years, and the city has been saving for these costs in the capital fund. The increase in expenditures is offset by an increase in the revenue and the transfers in, which we will see in the revenue section. Computer support has increased approximately forty-nine thousand dollars. This is primarily due to the increase in the records management software. The increase in the estimated cost is about thirty-five thousand with twenty thousand to be funded from Sourcewell, and the fifteen thousand becoming, uh, to be covered by using the one-time public safety aid. This assumes that we will continue to use vehicles. Due to supply, the city has not been able to get the budget number of vehicles. However, we did get several vehicles in two thousand and twenty-four. Staff is working on analysis of lease versus purchasing and looking at the number of vehicles that the city needs. The current budget reflects the high end of the recommended increases for the League of Minnesota Cities, um, guide for rates, values, exposure, and changes in experience mods for insurance. Overall, this resulted in an increase of forty-six thousand, or forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Transfers out, we have an increase of, uh, five thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. This change is due to updating the amount to be transferred from the fire capital fund per the fire capital, um, board agreements. For capital, capital, we're not proposing an increase, um, to the levy for capital equipment and facilities at this time. The current level can fund the proposed plan. The following two slides are compare the capital items proposed in June versus the current plan. The broom attachment and trailer have been removed from the streets budget with a skid steer trailer and scanning tool, and fifty percent of the costs of the attachments that will be shared by the parks department has been added. We also increased the cost for the GPS receiver by fifteen hundred dollars. We have two amounts that will be transferred to the working funds to pay for the update to the comprehensive plan and the street sweeping screening. Staff needs to review what is included in the library exterior and mechanical cost, and more discussion needs to be had on the city hall bathroom updates and the street scan software. We continue to look at the difference in the parks capital area. We removed the snowblower and added a skid steer and fifty percent of the attachment shared with the streets, and we've also increased the cost of the cameras by fifteen hundred dollars. The total cash to be spent in two thousand and twenty-five is one million, nine hundred ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. The park port, the park board requested five hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars to be added to the long-term capital maintenance account for a total planned expenditure in two thousand and twenty-five of two million, five hundred nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. If we look at a portion of our long-term capital plan, we see the levy of one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, as well as additional funding from the fire advisory boards plan. We see the one million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars of cash expenditures from the previous slide, and there is a five hundred and nineteen thousand dollar increase in the amount set aside for the parks' long-term capital maintenance projects. This funding level is not a guaranteed in the future years. We see a positive cash flow other than in two thousand and twenty-seven, but this plan does include the parks' long-term capital plan. It's not a guarantee, so we think it'll iron itself out. If we look at the two thousand and twenty-five debt levy, it's a decrease of two hundred and twelve thousand. Again, the debt levy for two thousand and twenty-five is to pay the August first, two thousand and twenty-five, and February first, two thousand and twenty-six debt payments, and the current levy is presented with the assumptions detailed in the memo from the August nineteenth council meeting. If we look at our other levies, the levies per the charter are a percentage of the previous year's total levy. The permanent improvement fund, which funds the infrastructure capital improvements, pays for the general maintenance like crack ceiling, seal coating, can go up to nine percent of the previous year's level levy. It is at nine percent as it has been improved, is at six percent as it has been in previous years. The library is requesting a two percent increase in the levy, just about three thousand dollars. The EDA commission has requested the maximum allowed by state statute, which would be expected increase of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars, and the airport is requesting a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation from both the city and the county. This would be an additional seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars from the two thousand and twenty-four levy. Mr. Wright, the airport executive, uh, director, will be discussing the increases at the August twenty-eighth PNF meeting. I think that's also when we'll have the discussion about the additional increases as well. Information from the library.
Including the parks, right?
Yes, the parks is included.
Will be included in the discussion.
The parks levy?
Yeah, we haven't had any discussion since they presented their request.
True. Okay, it is presented as they requested in the levy, but yes, we will discuss the park board budget as well. Um, per the PNF chair, council vice president, and city administrator, we kept the library, EDA, and airport at the same funding level as two thousand and twenty-four. If we look at other taxes, we see a decrease of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. This includes tax increment, it's not TIF, lodging, franchise, and penalty and interest on delinquent tax payments. Part of the change is that the amount of the estimated for tax increment with the decrease in the tax rate due to the increase in the estimate market value, we have less general tax increment generated. The other part of the decrease is the cable franchise fee that is being collected. If we could look at licenses and revenues, we see a decrease of sixty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. The decrease is due to decreasing building permit revenue by sixty-five thousand dollars. Staff is estimating that we will be short of the two thousand and twenty-four budget as well. The current budget does not include any revenue for projects like Country Matter, which were about the eighty to ninety percent that the project would go in two thousand and twenty-five, or for eight or five, eight-oh-five Laurel. It doesn't include the revenue because we thought these projects would be state-led inspections, so the fee would go to the state. We have received additional information on the delegation agreement, and we will discuss this at the next PNF meeting, and we'll determine if we need to amend the budget at that point, or update the budget. When we look at revenues, grants, and aids, we see an increase of six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, and this is due to the increase in the certified local government aid for two thousand and twenty-five, which is set at five million, two hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Revenues from other governments increase about forty thousand. We're budgeting twenty thousand from Sourcewell to pay for part of the increase for the cost of the records management software, and the increase in the revenue from the cities of Baxter and Nisswa for the increased costs in the share misdemeanor prosecutor services. Charges for services increase about forty-five thousand. This reflects the amount to receive in two thousand and twenty-five from the fire service areas will increase about seventeen thousand, four hundred. This amount was set in February of two thousand and twenty-four, and then we're budgeting an increase in the campground revenue as well. We look at fines and services, a decrease of about three thousand. Again, this is just adjusting the court fine revenue based on historical data. We have other revenues, an increase of sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars, just adjusting line items based on historical data, and staff would like to review the utility fund contribution to the city. Currently, the contribution rate is a set amount per kilowatt-hour sold. Perhaps this needs to be adjusted and/or look at a whole new contribution methodology. When we look at our transfers in, we see an increase of fifty-nine thousand dollars. This is a transfers in from the, uh, from the capital fund for the comprehensive plan update and the street sweeping screening cost. So, if we look at a recap of everything that we just covered, the city would need to increase the levy by eight-point-six-four percent for balanced budgeting. If the council were to improve the requests of the library, EDA, and airport, the proposed levy would need to be about ten-point-two-two percent over the two thousand and twenty-four levy increase, or levy. The city's revenue is the amount that the city levies. The only way the city can get additional revenue is for the city to increase its levy. A change in the estimated market value only changes how the pie is divided. I think oftentimes we hear, oh, this development will generate more tax revenue for the city. This isn't, uh, true as the development increases the total estimated market value of the city, but it does not increase the amount of tax revenue the city collects unless the city increases the levy. So, if we have the city levy divided by the total city tax capacity is what equals the city's tax rate. We then take the tax capacity of a particular parcel, multiply that by the tax rate, that equals the city's revenue for the parcel or the port, or the property's portion of the levy. So, if the tax levy were to stay the same and the total tax capacity of the city increases, the tax rate decreases, and if the city's levy were to stay the same and the total tax capacity of the city decreases, the tax rate increases. In Minnesota, taxing jurisdictions such as a city sets the levy amount, not the tax rate. The tax rate is the result of the city's levy and the tax capacity of the city. I was not able to get the estimated market value from the county for tonight's meeting. The following chart though does show the estimated market value for the city for the last six years and shows the percentage change for the last five years. Two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four increases of twenty-two and almost fifteen percent respectively were significant and were like anything we've seen before. This chart also shows the tax capacity of the city and the percentage change. Without having the preliminary estimated market value for pay year two thousand and twenty-five, I did not try to estimate the change in the tax rate.
Mr. Bevins? Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Connie, when you talk about the tax rate, what value is that to us when we're trying to set our levy? I've never seen that really play a role in the dollars we need versus, uh, you know, each property's taxable amount and that type of thing. How does that help us work through this, if, if at all?
The tax rate, again, with a city, a municipality sets the levy amount. The tax rate we have no control over.
That's my point.
Same number.
That's my point. I, I, I'm not even sure why we talk about it, but we do.
I think we talk about the tax rate just because we are so close to Baxter, and so a lot of people will compare the tax rate between the, among the city of what they're going to pay for taxes. I think that's why we talk about the tax rate.
Fair enough.
Gabby, I think you had a comment?
Yeah, I'm just saying, it, it's, it's the same number. It's in percentage form or dollar form. We set them both at the exact same time.
We don't set the tax rate.
The tax rate is simple division above the taxable value of the number we set. We get to pick that number ergo, we get to set the tax rate. It's the same number.
I would disagree because we don't have control over the values of our property in the city.
No, but we know what the values are before we set the tax rate, which is the one number that, the one variable that determines. So, it's... I just still disagree with you.
Okay. We have council discussion or any, any council input or direction to staff?
Good job.
All right.
Question?
I, I have one. You didn't put the dollars. Total dollar of levy. What did we levy last year versus what are we, what, what was that?
Yeah, that was in the packet, and I do have.
Eight-point-six-four percent.
I do have the slide here, um, that our two thousand and twenty-four levy was the six million, nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, which was an eight percent increase, and we had a tax rate of fifty-four-point-one-eight-three percent.
And since we don't know the estimated market value, by just adding up what you're presenting this evening, you're roughly...
We would see an increase in our tax rate.
Well, depends on what the market.
Right. If we assume a five percent increase in the tax capacity, you know, we are definitely going to see an increase in the tax rate, anything above.
Go back one side, please.
Above, uh, four percent.
So, two thousand and twenty-five, seven million dollars roughly plus eight, eight-and-a-half percent? Is that what?
It would be eight-point-six-four percent increase.
Eight million.
Yeah.
I'm just going to blow past seven.
It's going to be eight million, based on the presentation.
Correct. Well, it's currently, yes, just below eight million dollars.
Well, that's close to eight. That, that was the number I wanted to know.
And it's seven million what?
Six million, nine fifty-eight for two thousand and twenty-four, Jeff.
Right. What's?
The presentation we just saw this evening was eight-point-six-four percent five.
And that number is?
Well, it's going to be close to eight, nine.
It's seven million, five hundred sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Okay.
So, seven-point-five.
Seventy-five thousand is about one percent.
Seventy thousand is about one percent change in them.
Seventy-five thousand.
Well, that'd be of the current, but if you have to look at the six-point-nine million from last year, about seventy thousand is equals to one percent increase in the levy.
Okay.
And what, my, my last question is, what's our deadline, October first?
September thirtieth.
Okay.
So, if we look at what the next steps, I'll just go back to here. The preliminary levy can be set at the September sixteenth council meeting or special council meeting we need to be called. Needs to be done by September thirtieth. We could discuss the current budget at the September third council meeting, or maybe council would like another workshop for staff to provide additional information, possibly the week of September ninth. The final levy needs to be certified to the county by December thirtieth, and it cannot be lower but cannot be higher. And then here was the levy history. As just mentioned, the final levy can be lower but cannot be higher than the preliminary levy. As a reminder, the preliminary levy is what's used to send out the property tax notices in November. Oftentimes, when the preliminary levy is set, it's been said the final levy is not lowered. This chart shows that for the previous fifteen years, uh, of levies, the increase, the tax rate in the preliminary levy, and it shows that eight out of the fifteen years, the final levy has been lower than the preliminary levy. It's just informational.
Mr. Bev.
Mr. Chezak.
Um, I, I just wanted to mention the airport, and, um, as we see that it's, uh, the asks now is two-twenty-five, and up until this year, it's been one-fifty-five-five. Um, and we got that differential between the county raising theirs six percent, we lowered ours to one-forty-six and, uh, change. Um, and that's the recommendation moving forward to keep it up for next year, what it is this year at one-forty-six. Um, the other item that we've talked about was the city divesting the airport to the county, and I see that they have about a ninety, eighty-nine to ninety thousand dollar upfront cost to do that, which, uh, from our meeting on August first at the airport with FAA, many city, city and county staff, um, there was a, a, a cost identified. I think the county has come up with a more, uh, probably accurate number based on they're going through the numbers and coming up with an eighty-nine thousand dollar figure. It's, if you notice, it's not eighty-five, it's not ninety, it's eighty-nine, so I'm confident that they've done their, uh, calculations pretty good. But if, if the county is willing to move forward on this, they have to hear from us. They have to hear that I think the best thing to do at this point with the consider for the future, you know, what's our return on investment here? If we, if we might want to, uh, say, offer to the county to pay that upfront cost and make it more, uh, maybe more appetizing for them to go forward because they're going to have to have other work being done by their staff if they do take ownership. And, um, if we're looking at this in the long term, not right today, we pay the money today, we save that airport levy in, in perpetuity. We don't have that against our taxpayers every single year as it shows they want more for moving forward. And, um, I would just, uh, like to see something that we could see perhaps at our next meeting, and I would, uh, offer to maybe put something on our agenda for the, um, next Tuesday to come back and have a discussion on that specific item and see if we would have a council approval maybe coming out of that meeting to, uh, get the staff to come back with a report or some, something to show us, uh, where the numbers are, what we learned from the FAA, what we learned from the county. And I read this in the paper from their budget meeting this past Thursday. They didn't want to move forward, but I think if you read between the lines, they're saying they're looking for a little something in return from the city to help them moving forward. So, I just wanted to throw that out there because this is a long-term thing. This is, uh, we might take a little, a little, you know, hit on it to start out with here for the next year or two, but it's a long process based on what the FAA told us. It's a, at least a year, year and a half process. Once both sides agree, and we have to do that through resolution to say, yeah, um, here's what we'll do and here's what the county will do. Once they see that, then they say, okay, now we start our process with dotting all the i's, crossing all the t's, and get everything done correctly to maintain the commercial licensing, the FAA funding for all the grant money they get. And, um, you know, in the last ten years, it was stated they've received thirty-one million dollars from federal funding. That doesn't even talk about the essential air service. That's not even part of it, which right, currently is like six million dollars a year for the, for the commercial airline. So, I think, um, I, I would like to see that, uh, you know, of course, uh, we don't need to, you can get this on our agenda for Tuesday. I'm just kind of putting that bug in everybody's ear. I'll be asking for that and having that hopefully on our agenda, and, uh, maybe we can move forward with that or at least a discussion to see where we're at right now. Okay. Mr. Broyles has a comment.
Uh, thank you. Councilman Chezak, I do have a meeting with Debbie Erickson on Wednesday morning, and I'll understand. I've heard some of the chit-chat informally on what the county commissioner is thinking, but I'll get, uh, some formal feedback from Debbie on Wednesday, and I do intend to present some information at the next council meeting.
Perfect.
Um, just on that note, I appreciate that, but, um, the one thing we have to consider here, um, is our levy deadline preliminarily. So, if the county is able to set their levy based on us telling them, if this happens, I, I don't know what's going to happen, but again, um, I'm sure Nick will come back with something then based on what he just said. And, um, I think if we're going to do this, we have, they have the same deadline we do to set their preliminary levy, so if, if they're not interested in paying that upfront cost, they're not going to levy for it. And if we tell them, hey, we're interested in helping you, we will. If that's the case, I think that, uh, we can then, uh, they can then move, perhaps have the thought of moving forward at that time, but otherwise, I don't think they'll do anything. So, that's just my thought.
Regardless, it seems like we should have an airport discussion on the first meeting in September. Thank you, Jeff.
You bet. Thank you.
Any comments on the presentation this evening? Any other comments? Well, how about regarding on, oh, oh, hello, Tiffany? Okay, what's up?
Well, I, I guess I, I, eight-point-six-four is a large number, uh, but in looking at the, the library's request, it's a very modest number in the grand scheme of things. We did hold them flat last year. You know, we, we put lumping them together with the EDA and the airport. It's, um, I don't know that that's fair to, to lump those numbers because they're just orders of magnitude different. Um, and I guess I would like to hope that we could find a couple thousand dollars for them in our budget.
Thank you. That's not included in that.
Mr. President, Connie mentioned during the presentation, at the next council meeting, we will be discussing the library. We will be discussing the airport. We will be, that's already all on the agenda.
Yep.
A PNF which goes to the full council for a vote.
And again, just to show that the library's request is three thousand dollars. EDA's is twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. And the, uh, airport's request would be about seventy-nine thousand dollars. So it's about a total of a hundred and nine thousand dollars for all three.
Plus four-hundred-twenty-six thousand dollars for the roof.
For what?
For what?
For the library roof.
That, the building that we own, yes. But I think that that is going to decrease because I, I think, I believe that includes some of their HVAC system that they have done this year or that has been done this year.
Thank you. Any other comments? Kara?
Just a quick question. Connie, in terms of personnel, none of the BPU stuff that we have going on is reflected in the levy part, right? The levy discussion, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other discussion?
Just a reminder that the BPU presents their budget to the council the first meeting in December. And then the council approves their budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Do we need to schedule another budget meeting at this point or?
That is up to you guys.
Anybody feel we need to?
I don't believe we do.
Think we're okay?
Mr. Bevins?
Yep, hang, hang on one second. I want to ask our PNF chair, any idea we need to meet again, do you think at this point?
I don't think, we, we'll see on Tuesday night after how those discussions go.
Yep, that's what I think. We'll hold off for now. Mr. Cheswick?
Yeah, based on our discussion here, if, and, you know, Mr. Johnson said we'd still then meet on the sixteenth, and that's when we'd expect to set the preliminary levy. Is that what our thoughts are?
That would be my, that would be my expectation.
Okay.
Okay, and if we need one, we two know, then we can, we can try and squeeze one in. Okay, any final discussions? Anything from staff? Hearing none, we'll, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by student, second by Oday. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.